Good evening. Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a Form 4 Candidates for the August 9th Primary for Columbia Heights City Council. There are seven total candidates for the August ballot, four of whom are here this evening. After August 9th, the seven candidates will be narrowed down to four candidates who will be on the general election ballot in November. Hi, I'm Kathy Tinglestedt of the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters, and we're the sponsors of Meet the Candidates. I live in Coon Rapids, so I do not have a vote with these candidates. All candidates were invited to this forum, and as I mentioned, it was seven of them, four are here this evening. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens to become informed voters and advocates for important issues. This forum is about informing voters. And actually, there are quite a few informed voters already in Columbia Heights because we had 101 questions submitted. However, we won't have time for all of them this evening. They came from about eight different categories, so I'm going to try to get at least one from each category as we ask questions this evening. If you're interested in the League of Women Voters, you could check out our website, which is abbreviations for League of Women Voters, anokablancoonrapidsminnesota.org. Just real quick, I'll spell that out. L W V A B C M N dot O R G. And we welcome women, men, and young people to join our organization. The candidates will answer two introductory questions, which they've received in advance. Each of those will be 90 seconds. And then for the rest of the questions, as well as the closing statements, those are 60 seconds each. And the candidates will take turns in who's the first one to answer with each round. So, welcome to these candidates this evening, and in the order they'll begin speaking is Justice Spriggs, Nick Nowitzki, John Merzen, and Rachel James. And so with that, we'll get started. And Justice, you'll have the first opening question for 90 seconds, and that question is, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Well, first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum and for everyone tuning in tonight. Like she had mentioned, my name is Justice Spriggs. I'm a husband, new dad, and a 25-year-old, fourth-year medical student at the University of Minnesota. I grew up in a family of teachers, and for the longest time, I thought I was going to be a teacher as well. But talking to a couple of family friends, I found out that I could combine my passion for teaching and my love of science in the field of medicine. My motivation to run for office stemmed from my personal experiences and caring for patients that I've seen. Our teams are often able to manage complex medical issues, both in the clinic and hospital, but often these patients were going home to situations that negatively impacted their health. For example, many of them have lack of affordable housing, poor public transportation, inadequate access to good-paying jobs, and unsafe neighborhoods to navigate. We can diagnose and fix many diseases in medicine, but we weren't able to fix the root of their issues, which lies in policy failures. When I saw these same issues happening in Columbia Heights, I felt the need to step up and make a change. My training has prepared me well to serve on the council, as rooted in listening, working collaboratively as a team, and finding creative solutions to complex problems. I also want to be a voice for the people of Columbia Heights. By walking the streets of the city, knocking on over 2,000 doors, and having hundreds of positive conversations, it is clear that the people of the city care about the well-being of their neighbors, but feel that we could be doing much better.
Thank you. And next candidate is Nick Nowitzki, and the question is, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Oh, thank you. And thank you for hosting, League of Women Voters. What motivated me was, is that I'm a lifelong resident that has a passion for serving and helping the community. It has been that way since I was a child, really. And now I have two teenage daughters, so I want to continue to help make the city a safe, welcoming place for new families and current families that are here as well. Experience that would help would be, this will be my sixth year on city council. I'm currently serving as council president. I have been liaison to multiple boards, including library, park and rec, the school, and then with volunteer groups in the city, with quite a few of them, and I've held multiple board positions and offices. So, I feel that I have a good understanding of what different groups like, and by firsthand experience and knowledge can help to guide and compromise the city to a welcoming place.
Thank you. And next candidate is John Merzen, with the question of, what's your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
I'd like to thank you for hosting this tonight. And my motivation was, I've been a lifetime resident of Columbia Heights. I worked for the city of Columbia Heights for 38 years. When I retired, I decided to run for council, to give back to the city on what they gave me for all those years. Just the passion for the city, just to help residents out, and to help them do whatever problems they have. They call, and I talk to them, help them take care of the problem. And I'm on a liaison for the Relief, Fire Relief Association, the Planning Commission, and I was a volunteer fireman. That's why I'm on the liaison for the police and fire, you know, deal. I just, passion just with the city, that everybody's so good here, that I just cannot not run again to make, to help the residents out and keep everything running smooth like it has been for the last two terms that I've been on city council. Thank you.
Thanks. And the introductory question from our fourth candidate is Rachel James, and again, the question is, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you, Kathy, and the League. My name is Rachel James, and I'm running for city council here in Columbia Heights because I love this city. This is just the fantastic small town in a big city. My husband and I have made this our home for the past 12 years. Our kids live here with us. They went to Highland Elementary. Now you'll see them running around the library and Central Avenue. This has been a wonderful place to live and to serve. My experience, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration with a minor in urban studies, a master's in community ministry leadership, and I've spent my career working with families and nonprofits, churches, and educational institutions. I'm currently the director of children, youth, and family ministry at First Lutheran Church here in Columbia Heights. I volunteer a second term now on the Parks and Recreation Board. I am a member of the Multicultural Advisory Commission to the Columbia Heights Police for the last six years, in which I've led up conversations on immigration, and policing, and race. I'm a volunteer with Crestview and Saica Nursing Home, bringing groups to serve there. I work with the Girl Scouts as a leader, and I've led community-wide efforts, like helping with the Central Avenue cleanups here through the Heights Next, and working to bring the Every Meal Backpack Feeding Program to the Heights Schools. Thank you.
Thanks. And so our next question for the opening remarks, the question is, what are your goals for Columbia Heights future? First up would be Nick Nowitzki.
Thank you. If elected to serve another term, my goal would be to continue to make Columbia Heights a safe, family-friendly, and welcoming community, with a public safety force that's leading the way in community policing, continue to improve our infrastructure, which will hopefully bring in new and better businesses, and to see more developments come in that can help us reach our goals with the different varieties of housing that's needed to satisfy all of our current residents. Thank you.
Thanks. And next up, John Merzen, what are your goals for Columbia Heights future?
My goals for Columbia Heights future is to make Columbia Heights as safe as it's been for the last, for quite a while. We've got a great police department that I support, and fire department, and public works. I go, my main thing is just to keep everything running smooth like it has been, working good with all the communities, the Lions Club, the boosters, and all that. So, I mean, just trying to keep everything running smooth, and make it a safe place, and working to get the playgrounds and stuff, handicap accessible, stuff like that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next up is Rachel James. What are your goals for Columbia Heights future?
My goals for the future of Columbia Heights, number one, is our livability. The same things that drew me to Columbia Heights, the great neighborhoods, the parks, the trails, we need sidewalks, I want to increase this public infrastructure so that this is a great place to live. That includes Central Avenue and the safety on Central Avenue, adding in crosswalks and making it pedestrian and bike and transit friendly, along with a great place for our businesses. My second goal would be business development. We have a lot of unused commercial space, and we need those services in our city. We need affordable housing. We need regular market-rate housing. We need a grocery store. And we also need that tax revenue that businesses bring. Currently, our city has a low ratio of business revenue to homeowner revenue compared to neighboring cities. And finally, my third goal for the city would be inclusivity. We need to bring diverse voices to the table. We need BIPOC people on our boards and commissions, council votes, who gets to be on those commissions and boards. We need to hear what's happening in our Somali and Latina, and our communities of new people, renters, young people. I believe that our city is better when we can hear from everyone, and I've been working in those goals right now. Thank you.
Thanks. And so the last one to answer this first question, what are your goals for Columbia Heights future? Justice Spriggs.
And thank you for the question. I think I like to break this down into both short-term and long-term goals. So, my short-term goals for the city are that we should be taking action on measures that can quickly improve the lives of our residents. So, things such as investing in our parks by adding soccer fields, adding a skate park, building a recreation center, investing in our arts programs, and adding sidewalks are things the city can do to better the lives of the people who are here. Also, a short-term goal of mine is to increase the transparency, responsiveness, and accessibility of the city council. One of my main motivations for running for city council stems from being vocal about multiple issues in our community that are important to me, but not receiving responses from some council members after contacting them. It's a core job of the city councils to listen to their constituents' questions and concerns, and try to find a solution. As a council member, I promise to always represent, or respond to your questions and concerns, have frequent town halls, and always try to find a solution that works for everyone. In terms of long-term goals for Columbia Heights, I want to create a Columbia Heights that works, and works for everyone, allows everyone to thrive. This includes things such as redeveloping Central Avenue into a Main Street for Columbia Heights, bringing new businesses that create local jobs for residents of the city, fostering strong partnerships between our city council and schools, bringing back a dedicated medical clinic to the community, and improving the transportation infrastructure of the city, including the addition of a microtransit program that helps those who are in need navigate our city. Over time, these things will be created, will help create an atmosphere that we all feel welcome to work, live, and play here.
Thank you. Those were the opening statements, and now we'll move to the questions that were submitted from people in the community. And as I mentioned earlier, there were 101 questions. I think that's a new record for League of Women Voters, which is awesome because it tells that people are paying attention. And so the questions range from different areas about traffic, business, diversity, climate change, all kinds of tax issues. And so I'll try to kind of touch on maybe one question for each of those categories. We're going to start with public safety, and each of you alluded to it in your earlier comments, but I'll give you another 60 seconds to talk about what you're going to do. And so specifically, the question was, what would you do to enhance public safety in Columbia Heights? And first up is John Merzen.
Make it safe for the kids to play in the parks, make Central Avenue a safer place from all the accidents that we've had in university, and just support the police department because they're doing a great job, so is the fire department, you know? And my main goal is just to make the streets safer for every resident in Columbia Heights. Thank you.
Thanks. And so for a 60-second response, next up will be Rachel James. What would you do to enhance public safety in Columbia Heights?
I have been volunteering and working with our police department. Almost as soon as we moved in, I signed up to be a block captain and attend all the coffee with the cops. Like I said, I've been working intensely for the last six years with the department because I really believe public safety is something that we can all add to. What I would do is, public safety includes our award-winning, community-oriented policing. That's what we need to have. We are here to serve our neighbors, whether that is with ambulance, a fire, clean streets, or with an officer. Too often, we have seen conflicts with residents and police because there's not listening and communication, and the Heights Department does a fantastic job of that. I would continue to support the initiatives of having the social workers embedded in our police department. I also would include opportunities to work on town halls with the police in our various diverse communities. Thank you.
Thanks. And next one to answer this question is Justice Spriggs. What would you do to enhance public safety in Columbia Heights?
So, looking at the 2022 census data, one of the top concerns of the residents was rising crime in the city. But at the same time, 93% of those who filled out the same city indicated that they do feel safe in Columbia Heights. So, what that's telling me is that they feel safe in Columbia Heights, but we need to take a collaborative approach with the cities around us because we can't look at public safety in the box of Columbia Heights. We need to have active conversations with St. Anthony in Minneapolis, and Robbinsdale, and Fridley, and New Brighton as well, to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of our public safety plans, and we're trying to be proactive. Because coming from a healthcare background, healthcare and public safety are somewhat alike in terms of that the best thing we can do is be proactive before concerns happen. So, we need to continue investing in programs and initiative that help those that are in trouble and need help to try to prevent crime before it happens. And as was mentioned before, our police department is active and engaged in the community, which should continue, and they've done a good job about that. And the addition of a social worker to the police force has been immensely helpful, and I support that program and would like to increase the number of social workers we have on staff because we know that the outcomes with those who are in mental health crises definitely improves when they're present.
Thank you. And next up is Nick Nowitzki, same question. What would you do to enhance public safety in Columbia Heights?
Oh, thank you. I would continue to fund our public safety departments, police, and fire with the necessary training, equipment, and resources that's needed to effectively reach everybody in the community. I'm happy that we actually did just add a second social worker to the force so that there will be one for day shift and night shift, another that we're leading the way in keeping people safe and helping an underserved population of our community. And the other thing would be to keep improving the communication. We need to make sure that we have accurate, timely communication out, especially if something tragic happens, so that the misconception and assumptions aren't put out there first, giving a bad perception and not the reality. Thank you.
Thanks. So, we'll move on to the next question here. This is regarding traffic. We'll be starting with Rachel James. And there was several different questions about traffic. Somebody pointed out, street parking in the winter is difficult, and a lot of accidents, it seems, by some of the busy roads. But the question specifically that I'll read here from one of the residents is, talks about Highway 65. It says, "North of here, many people talk about the need to improve Highway 65, which of course is Central Avenue in Columbia Heights. How do you see the city being impacted by changes to that road, perhaps as soon as 2026? And what might City of Columbia Heights do to get ready for the changes along 65 and Central?" First up is Rachel James.
Thank you. We all know that Central Avenue is really the heartbeat of our city. It's the face that people see when they come through, holds the vast majority of our businesses. But right now, Central Avenue is slated to be redeveloped through the Minnesota Department of Transportation. They are currently hosting public meetings, and there is a group in Columbia Heights working to petition them to take into account the needs of Columbia Heights because too often, we've been a pass-through city. And so what I've been working with them and advocating is that we would include the needs of everyone here, public transportation, bikers, walking transit. And so what we need to do as a city is, we need to make our voices heard. I think there is strong representation from our state representative, Aaron Kegel, who is on the team that is redeveloping Heights, and we need to partner with the state and our elected officials here in Columbia Heights to make it safe and more beautiful. Plant some flowers, get some lights on there. Thank you.
And next up, Justice Spriggs, regarding transportation or traffic issues. How do you see the city being impacted by the changes on Highway 65 and Central? And what would the City of Columbia Heights do to get ready for those changes?
And thank you for that question. I think a lot of the concerns around Central Avenue are about the safety for both walkers and bikers, and then obviously, for the drivers as well. So, when we're talking, we're having these discussions and open forums with MINDOT. There are a lot of questions and concerns and proposals being brought up, but in my opinion, the redevelopment should be centered on all people who use that, not just as a way to get in and out of Minneapolis. So, in terms of things that the city can do, or things we should be promoting, should be looking at different ways we can improve the walkability of Central Avenue, such as increasing the width of sidewalks, or increasing the width of crosswalks, in addition to setting up our businesses for increased traffic as well. Because if we improve their accessibility, they're going to be seeing more business as well, so that's something we should look at.
Great. Okay, next up is Nick Nowitzki, and that question again relates to traffic and roads in our area. How do you see the City of Columbia Heights being impacted by the changes? And what might the city do to get ready for those changes?
Thank you. Let's see. For Central, we will be impacted, not only on Central, but our side streets that the city does have more control over. And I would like to see more of a stop-stine study done, take away some of the uncontrolled intersections, and make more sense of our stop signs that we currently have because there's going to be more people traveling off Central, trying to get around the backstreets. And if we have a more clear system of stop signs and yield signs, that'll help out that way, and we can be prepared. Also, we just made some updates to the right-of-way clearance so that we can keep the intersections clear, so that you have a better sightline for walkers, and bikers, and pets, and people that may be trying to run up at the corners. So, preparing our side streets for when Central happens is what I would do.
Okay, thank you. And next up will be John Merzen. How do you see the City of Columbia Heights being impacted by the changes on 65 and Central? And what might the city do to prepare for those changes?
Well, talking with MINDOT, when we had those couple meetings, that MINDOT's really interested in working with the city right now, with the council and the residents, to get this straightened out, to stop the pedestrians from getting hit, and all the traffic accidents on Central. So, I think, you know, MINDOT's really, really listening to us pretty good right now. So, I think, once MINDOT gets something figured out, they'll bring it back to the residents and the city council, and let us know what their decision was, and see what we can work with them. If there's something that we don't like, that we can get a change, so that everybody can work together and get that Central Avenue, the speed slowed down. I'd like to see it 30 mile an hour from 53rd all the way to 37th, just make it one straight thing instead of 30, 40 mile an hour zone. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. So, we'll move on to another question. This is related because it has to do with businesses in Columbia Heights. And so we'll start with Justice Spriggs, and the question is, what will you do to promote new business in Columbia Heights, and also revitalize the large, empty commercial spaces on Central Avenue and on 38th Street?
I think an easy thing to continue that the city council's currently doing is the facade program to kind of help revamp and redevelop some of the businesses on Central Avenue. I would like to continue, or expand that program all the way up to Central, or up to the Fridley border, so that all businesses would be available to apply for that. In terms of promoting small business, a lot of them reside on Central Avenue, so it is deeply intertwined with the accessibility and drivability of Central Avenue. So, if we can design Central Avenue to be a Main Street for Columbia Heights, where cars are part of the picture, not the majority of the picture, you're only going to improve the small business access there. I think we also need to take a look at what types of businesses we are bringing into Columbia Heights, especially with some larger commercial sites available. I know a grocery store is a big ask of a lot of people, and I think that'd be a great addition to the city, and also looking at newer, smaller businesses, and restaurants, and shops that fit our smaller-town feel, and will also bring jobs to our community.
Thank you. And so next to answer this question will be Nick Nowitzki. What will you do to promote business in Columbia Heights and revitalize large, empty commercial spaces on Central and 38th Street?
Thank you. To promote new business, I do like the facade improvement program, as Justice had said. We did actually just increase it to cover all of Central Avenue as well, and I believe that does help and will show any potential new businesses that we do care as a city. We like to work together, and that we're improving our infrastructure with each development that we do. The mess right now on Central is sewer-related, to help with infrastructure for any future developments. And if we have a good core and a good relationship with current businesses, I believe that'll help attract new ones to come in. Thank you.
Great. Next will be John Merzen. What will you do to promote new business in Columbia Heights and revitalize empty commercial spaces on Central and on 38th Street?
We've been working really close with community development, and they've been reaching out to a lot of different aspects on different businesses that we could get in throughout the whole city, and they've been trying their best in working to get us a grocery store where the old Rainbow used to be. They're working hard on that, and I think they might be pretty close to getting something in there right now, the way they talked. And just, we've been trying to get, we got that new brewery coming in over there on 40th and Central by Napa and that. So, we've been, community development in the city and the council's been working hard, trying to get new businesses in here right now. And that facade program's been working out great. We've had a lot of people come in on Central Avenue and 40th that wanted to upgrade their businesses, and it's been working out great for us. Thank you.
Sounds good. And the final candidate to answer this question is Rachel James. What will you do to promote the new business in Columbia Heights and revitalize empty commercial spaces on Central and 38th Street?
Thank you. Businesses are so important to our community to provide services for our residents. I'd love to be able to shop for my groceries in Columbia Heights and go out for a beer at the new brewery. But we also need that for jobs and for tax development. The city council has the opportunity to create zoning opportunities, conditional use permits. We have a fantastic city planning and community development departments here at the city, and we can be behind them and support their uses. There is grant programs, the facade program's been mentioned. I was talking with a business owner on Central Louise at El Tequila, and he said that has made a huge improvement. But what is even going to help is the domino effect of new housing going in, new residents, more customers. And there's another grant program that the city's doing for fire suppression systems. I support that. The Chamber of Commerce meets quarterly at the Columbia Heights Library. I've attended those meetings and heard from the business owners that they want more connection and communication in Columbia Heights. Thank you.
Great. We'll move on to another question submitted by someone in the public, and there was actually several of them related to taxes and city budget. As you know, city council, it's one of your main responsibilities, is balancing the budget. And so specifically, this question says, "Inflation and supply chain demands have substantially increased costs of most resources while there's a tight labor market, and that's elevating wage demands. So, would you support raising taxes in order to make it necessary to maintain the city's existing level of services and staff? And if not, what areas would you cut to keep taxes level?" First up, Nick Nowitzki.
Thank you. Let's see. With, the city just did a compensation study for the workers, all, every worker in the city, and most of them got raises. So, we are going to have to have taxes to cover that, and I would not be in favor of decreasing any of the services that we've put in place, especially over the last, you know, six, eight years. We have turned ourselves more proactive instead of reactive, and I would not want to get rid of that. And I still want to give all of our employees a livable wage, and unfortunately, that does mean that taxes may have to go up to do that. Thank you.
Okay, next up, John Merzen, same question. Do you support raising taxes to keep the city's level of services and staff at the existing level? Or if not, what would you do to cut in order to keep taxes level?
I wouldn't want anybody to lose their jobs, so I'd like to do the best to keep the taxes where they're at, or maybe raise the taxes a little bit. But what we've been doing was just doing our best to keep the taxes as low as, excuse me, as low as possible, but still trying to make the residents happy. but still trying to make the residents happy with whatever little tax increase we have or if we have to do a tax increase just to make sure that we don't lose no public works for the snow plowing or cutting the park grass or fire protection or police protection because that'll just make the city go downhill if we start having to cut police and fire right now. So we're, we're doing our best to keep it as low as possible if we do have to do a increase in taxes. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is Rachel James. And so would you support raising taxes in order to keep the city's existing level of services and staff? If not, what areas would you cut to keep the taxes level?
Thank you. I am very empathetic to our citizens who are struggling to pay for their gas and for their groceries. I know we have two teenagers like Nick and boy, that grocery bill gets really high. But we also do need to maintain our city and I would support keeping the staff and the services that we have. The city is doing a great job with efficiencies and helping people do lots of things with small amount of hours. And so I would support increasing those efficiencies, but also raising taxes if need be. And like Justice mentioned in our city survey, almost everyone wants to increase some of the infrastructure in our parks, whether that's new accessible playgrounds or dog parks or skate parks. And I would support a small, a few dollars a month tax increase to increase our public services. And overall, I think that we are using our tax money very efficiently in Columbia Heights and I'm very proud of the work that's been done for that so far. Thank you.
And the final one to answer this round of questions will be Justice Spriggs. And what would you do as far as support in raising taxes to maintain the level of the city's existing services and staff? But if you would not raise taxes, what would you do to make cuts in order to keep taxes level?
It's always a constant push and pull between increasing taxes and making cuts. And it's definitely a difficult decision to make. But given the, the services that the city currently offers, I would not want to make any cuts to those. So I would be in favor of a small tax increase if needed to keep our, our city services and the workers employed with that. And once again, referencing that 2022 citywide survey, there is actually an appetite for some small tax increases if the public knows what their money is going towards. And specifically in that survey, things like investing in our roads, our parks, redevelopment, immersion hall, and bringing a dedicated recreation center to Columbia Heights are either supported or strongly supported by 73% of the people who took that survey. So I think the, we need to always be mindful of who these tax increases are going to end up affecting the most. But a large portion of the community is for a small tax increase if they know it's a good investment for the community.
Thank you. We'll go to our next round of questions, which will be a little bit lighter. We always like to have something in here which is kind of an icebreaker, not quite so deep as taxes and all those types of things. Somebody did submit a question about if Columbia Heights were to have a city song, what would it be and why? But I'm not going to ask you that one. The one I do want to ask you though is, in your spare time here in Columbia Heights, what are your favorite places to spend time? If you could be, list a specific location. First up is John Merzen.
I like going to the parks with the grandkids and stuff because grandkids are just so adorable that you just can't say no to them. So most, most of my time is, you know, either at home with the grand, you know, with, either at home with the wife or going out with the grandkids to different parks and doing stuff with them in Columbia Heights. So.
Great. Next up is Rachel James. What are your favorite places to spend time in Columbia Heights?
Okay. We love to go out to eat. So I already mentioned El Tequila. We go to Taco Logo all the time, Big Marina, Philphala, Offandina forever. I've gone to Sarnas. I just love all the diverse restaurants in Columbia Heights. If I forgot one, let me know. I will try it. We also love going for bike rides. So we go to Silverwood Park, Kodiak Park. Kids are a little older, but they used to love the splash pad at Housit Park. Seeing movies at Heights Theater is always a blast. We, I buy things at Dollar Tree. I'm probably the only one who still buys things at Dollar Tree. And I just love to walk around and see all my neighbors' pollinator gardens. We usually go for a walk every day. And I get to meet the neighbors and meet their dogs and see their beautiful yards. That's a big part of my life here in Heights.
Great. And next up is Justice Spriggs with the question of, what are your favorite places to spend time in Columbia Heights?
I think like Rachel mentioned, our family is big on eating out and enjoy that. A couple favorites for us are Heights Pizza Man. Definitely recommend that and Sarnas as well. And we live pretty close to Kodiak Park. So it's just a block away. So we are often walking our, our newborn son and two dogs around there and then also taking our newborn son to, to the various splash pads and especially at Housit Park. And I might date myself a little bit, but way back in the day, my, my parents used to take me to Castle Heights when that was still a thing. And my sister and I really enjoyed playing on that.
Great. And next up to answer that is Nick Nowitzki. What are your favorite places to spend time in Columbia Heights?
Probably the parks. Ever since the kids were little, we would always go to the parks, go for walks, go to different playgrounds. Sullivan, we lived close to there. So that was one of our favorites. And then also immersion hall because of all the great park and rec programs. It's a great place to meet new people in your community. I know my kids met a lot of their friends there and still have them when they're growing up. So really just taking advantage of our parks and the community buildings that the city has to offer. Thank you.
Great. And I believe that was everybody on that one. Right. So we'll move to the next question here. The first one will be Rachel James. And this one relates to diversity. I know you mentioned different restaurants and, and probably most people in the metro consider the city Columbia Heights to be a very diverse area, lots of multiculturalism. So specifically, the question is, what's one new way that the city of Columbia Heights could embrace its growing multicultural identity?
Thank you so much. Before I get into that, I forgot to mention the library. We go to the library every week with as many books as we can carry. That's also a favorite place. I think that the diversity of our city is one of the strengths. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to move here. So for me, how we can encourage and connect with that, one step is to develop an equity statement for our city, which would be something that the boards and councils and the council itself could look at when making decisions, could look at when we're appointing new members to teams, could look at when deciding how to do our funding. Our city has a large diverse Somali population, Latino population, native groups. We can continue to support the efforts to include those voices in our leadership. We also have our own Columbia Heights Pride Festival. The LBGQ community here is organized and that is a huge part of what makes a small town a part of a great community. We have renters, we have senior citizens, we have homeowners. All of us together need to communicate and connect. Thank you.
Okay. And next up will be Justice Spriggs. What's a new way that the city of Columbia Heights could embrace its growing multicultural identity?
And being biracial, to my knowledge, if I was elected, I'd be only the second official to ever serve on the city council in the 102-year history with the first being elected in 2020. So I think in terms of when we, we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, it's great to say things, but we also need to back that up with action. We can talk about appointing people to different boards and commissions or asking people to run for city council or for mayor, but they also need the support of the community. They need to have the resources to, to be successful when they go for those things as opposed to just, just saying these things, but not giving them any resources to, to be successful. So in terms of that, I would like to actually serve as a, a point person for people who are interested in getting involved in our community as someone who has gone through this process before to kind of give them advice and give them some resources so that they can, can go in with having at least a little bit of knowledge and not go in blind.
Thank you. Next up will be Nick Nowitzki. What's a new way for the city of Columbia Heights to embrace its growing multicultural identity?
To keep communication and outreach in new fashions, to engage more people, to come out, apply for the boards, apply for the commissions. Everybody should have an equal opportunity to apply for the boards, commissions and to run for office. I know a few years ago, since I've been on, we actually opened that process up on our commissions to where before it was basically a lifetime appointment. If you were on it and wanted it, it just kind of went to you again. Now we have open interviews every year. We've, we've had many candidates, probably more than in the past at all. And it's equal to everyone to have a chance and then to come interview and give your best answers to get on. Thanks.
Thank you. And the last one to answer this one is John Merzen. What's a new way that the city of Columbia Heights could embrace its growing multicultural identity?
Well, we've been doing, like I agree with what Nick said with the, with the different commissions and stuff and board members. We changed that around and it's working out really good right now. But just, you know, maybe we could just have some more oriented picnics with, just bring a bunch of people together, have it at a park, get some more, you know, diversity going, just opening up to different people and stuff. And but we've been, we've been doing a good job, you know, with our diversity from what I've seen because I, for my whole life here, it's really changed and it's going, it's looking really good right now. It's going forward good with the diversity that we're doing right now. And we're working on doing, making ourselves better over the years. So, thank you.
Thanks. And I believe that was everyone that answered that one. We'll start this next one will be with Justice Spriggs. And I'm trying to look at some questions that kind of talked about some of the business things and diversity things. I know I learned some new information about Columbia Heights as I was going through here. And one of the issues relates to zoning. And I know that zoning is a big issue for city councils and that could relate to some of the business things that you mentioned earlier. So specifically, one of the residents submitted a question of, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why? Justice?
I'll have to admit, I'm not an expert on zoning codes, but I think anything we can do to support current businesses in terms of if they're looking for expansions or redevelopment of their current businesses to kind of promote more economic stability or improvement for them. And then in terms of the old resident, or excuse me, the old industrial buildings we have such as the, the old Rainbow site on Central Avenue, where you think about the old unique site down on 37th instance in there, in terms of if we, we can look at the current zoning laws and see if we can get creative about what we can do with what we have. Because as it stands now, Columbia Heights is landlocked where we don't have any room to expand outward. So we either need to expand upwards, which is not always a popular thing, or we need to get creative with, with what we have to kind of redevelop that into new things for the city.
Okay. And then the next one to answer is Nick Nowitzki, is what would you change as far as one thing in the zoning code and why would you change it?
Let's see. With the mixed-use zoning code, I would like to see a hard number of percentage on what the business has to be. Because the way it is right now, we can have a huge development of apartments or living facilities and one small portion has to be business. One way to make sure that we get businesses in here is to have a percentage tied to that. And I think that would help and help clarify a lot of the developments that are coming into. Thank you.
Next up is John Merzen. If you could change one thing about the zoning code, what would it be and why?
The one thing that I'd like to change about the zoning code would be, well, while they're working on it, but we're not getting that close to it is all these people that buy, or businesses that come in and buy, we buy ugly houses and they turn around and put in single-family homes in a rental property. And there's so many of them that they're buying up and so many are on one block or two blocks within the same neighborhood. I'd like to see them step down and change that so that it turns more into a family-friendly neighborhood than rental property. And here, rental property next to you and stuff. So that'd be the main thing that I'd like to get changed in Columbia Heights, make it more of a single-family home instead of rental, rental family home. So that's all I have.
Okay. And next to answer this will be Rachel James. If you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
I agree with John. The new proposed ordinance to limit the number of single-family homes that can be turned into rentals, I think will be really fantastic for our city. We need housing, but we don't want to have these multinational corporations come, buy up our affordable houses, which is what drew me to the Columbia Heights, and turn them into rentals. Some of our landlords are fantastic, but some are absent. And the city council spends a lot of time working on enforcement of having good quality, affordable housing. So the proposed ordinance has been a topic of discussion at city council work sessions. It's very progressive and proactive to limit this changeover that might happen. You know, our strength is in our diversity. It, we found out in Minnesota, only 77, 77% of families that are white background own their own home, but only 25% of black families and less of other different ethnic groups. And we need to keep our housing prices stable so that people can buy their homes and make this a place for their families to live. So I think we need to change the number of rental license that we allow per block in Columbia Heights.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question. And the first one to answer will be Nick Nowitzki. And this is about climate change. Do you support a climate action plan for the city of Columbia Heights? What would be addressed in such a plan and why?
I believe in helping the climate and the environment. I guess I would need specifics on the climate action plan. I know that the city already invests and has solar. We do a lot with sustainability with the pollinator gardens everywhere throughout the city. Really, I've planted one of the last couple summers myself. The adopted drain and just the cleanup that Rachel had mentioned. We do a university cleanup at the same time. And all that involvement from different members of the community really gets people motivated. So I would be for change, but I mean, as far as the climate action plan, I'd have to see the specifics before I say yes to.
Thank you. Same question, John Merzen. Do you support climate action plan? And if so, should it be addressed, what should be addressed in the climate action plan?
I'm not that well up on the climate, but you know, the, the whole climate thing. But the, like Nick said, the climate action plan, if it does come down, I'd like to read more into it, more understand it before I make a decision on it. But if it sounds like it's going to work for, because we're just a small community. We not, it's not like we're going through the whole world, you know? So you know, it's just, something's, for us to do a climate thing, we'd have to really look at it, that make sure that it works for our community and it's not going to backfire on us. And what we decide to do it, if we have to do it quick, it might not work out for us. But I'm, I'm in favor for it as once, once they get a better plan or tell us what we're doing, then I'd be more than, more than happy to support it and look into it. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is Rachel James. Do you support a climate action plan for the city of Columbia Heights? What should be addressed in such a plan?
Yes, I support a climate action plan for Columbia Heights. We are doing a fantastic job, as Nick said, with the solar energy from our city buildings. And I'd like to see that program expanded into our businesses and residential. I'm a volunteer with the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. And so I work on the pollinator gardens as well and our Monarch Festival coming up. I'm adopted park, adopted drain. But we have seen already the effects of climate change in Columbia Heights. When we were talking about the parking ban enforcement, the public works employees were talking about the number of snowfalls. November doesn't have nearly as many as it used to have 20, 30 years ago. Our city forester is fantastic, Liam, and he has talked about planting trees in Columbia Heights that are climate change-resistant, knowing that this is already affecting our city. So I believe our city must do its part to help our city stay green and clean for the future. And that is a huge passion of mine and something I've been working on in the last 12 years I've been here. Thank you.
Great. And then the last one to answer this set of questions is Justice Spriggs. And do you support a climate action plan? If so, what should be as part of that climate action plan?
As a, as a scientist by training, I have my undergrad degree in biochemistry. Yes, I would support a climate action plan because we are already seeing the, the effects of climate change in Columbia Heights, as Rachel alluded to. And a couple of specific things I would like to look for in that is how we're reducing emissions and how we're also continuing to move towards more renewable energy sources. It's great. We already have some solar energy, but we need to expand that further throughout the city. And other things looking at like, how can we work towards moving our citywide vehicles towards electric and relying less on natural gas as well? And I think that we are a small city, but we still need to do our part in terms of combating climate change because in the end, we're, we are looking at how we can improve the environment and our earth, not looking at how we can improve the environment and our earth, not for only our generation, but for our kids as well. And as Rachel had alluded to, we're already seeing less snowfalls in the winter. And as we're experiencing right now, this is a much drier summer than we've had in years past.
Thank you. So we'll move to our next questions that were submitted by residents. And actually, there were several different ones related to the economy and what's going on right now with the cost of living and inflation and job layoffs. In fact, we even had a single mother send in something and talked about how she, you know, has trouble making it from paycheck to paycheck with supporting her children. And so, you know, knowing that those types of people are living here in Columbia Heights as they are around the country, and looking ahead for a potential economic downturn. Okay, we're going to start here with John Merson. The specific question is, how do you think the council can prepare the city for a potential economic downturn? John?
Boy, that's a good one. I guess the city has to take a look at what we can do to help the residents out and have backup plans for in case residents do fall into trouble like we do now where they can get to go through Anoka County for help with their assistance in case they fall behind on mostly anything right now, you know, with the rent and water and sewer and stuff and electric bills. So I think the city's going to be looking, you know, we'll be doing our best to try to keep everything as together as possible to help everybody out. That's all I have.
Good. Rachel James, what do you think the Columbia Heights City Council can do to prepare the city for a potential economic downturn?
One of the things that makes Columbia Heights great is so many people here volunteer and serve in so many places. And I love the programs that John was mentioning, the community assistance programs in Anoka County and the renters assistance here. We also have a fantastic food shelf in Columbia Heights that's so much more. It's SECA, Southern Anoka County Assistance. And they network with many other organizations. So in a time of downturn, we need our neighbors. We just do. And looking back in history, other recessions and depressions, that's how cities have made it through, through community networking, through community development with one another, through using our volunteerism to support community gardens, job networking. And I think we can do it. It is a big challenge for each of us individually and as a city. Thank you.
Okay, great. And next up is Justice Briggs, same question. How do you think the city council can prepare the city for an economic downturn?
I think one way that the city council can kind of prepare if that were to happen is to know what grants and programs are available through both, or through the city, the county, and at the state level so that they can be prepared to give that out to any residents who are in need. Because a lot of times, those programs take time to work. So we need to get to people early before it's too late. I think also a thing that the city can do, which we've already kind of talked about on a couple of questions, is be proactive in bringing in businesses. Because we bring in local businesses, we're creating jobs in Columbia Heights. And often, the financial downturn that some people may be facing is job-related. So if we can bring local jobs into Columbia Heights, that's a big thing we can do. But we can't do that without having other support programs. So if we talk about having increased childcare services maybe put on through the school that are low or free of cost in terms of that, because we need to look at not only the financial aspect of what our residents are going through, but also how can we support them in rebuilding their financial stability?
Thank you. And the next one for this is Nick Nowitzki. And how do you think the council can prepare the city for a potential economic downturn?
First, by making our staff and city services as efficient as possible for the taxes that we must charge to have those services, which I think we do a pretty good job of and continue to make improvements. Second would be partnerships. A lot of the assistance and services that's requested isn't offered at the city level, but it's where people go to look for it. And where the starting point is, we need to have better partnerships with the school district, with the county, and with the state to let people know where they can reach out for the proper agencies that can answer those questions and help out. I know recently, the school district and Park and Rec had partnered up with some extra reading programs and to make better use of the Circle Terrace Building for school-related activities, really. And that started by an email that was sent out. I emailed the school staff just to say, hey, we have this great facility here. What can you do to help the residents? Thank you.
Okay, we're coming to almost the close of time. Before we go into the closing statement, so I would like to have kind of a shorter, lighter question. And actually, no one submitted it, but we have used this in previous Legal Women Voters forums. So I'll start by saying, look to the person on your right, the candidate on the right side of you. And so, if you're there, okay, you figured it out. And so, think about what they would bring to the city council. And you guys have been so informed and cordial this evening. I've been very impressed by that. And so, as far as being able to work together, so if you were elected and the person to your right was elected, give me one characteristic that you think would be helpful with that person in what they would bring to the council. So we're going to start with Rachel James about John.
I've always appreciated, since I've lived here, how kind and professional John has always been. And I think that is really important in our city. And you always greet me, and you always want to greet every person in the room and listen to their concerns. I think he's a great listener, and I think that he would bring that sort of respect for all people to our city.
Thank you. And next up is Justice Briggs. So you'll be talking about Rachel, right? Okay. Characteristics about being on the city council?
I think since I've known Rachel for close to a year now, she's a helper. So when I had first initially thought about running for city council, she was the first person I contacted. And she set up a meeting, kind of let me know what was going on and what she thought about it and was willing to give me any help she needed. And I know she's kind of, over the years, been really involved with the community and won on, always just kind of wants to lend a helping hand. And that's definitely something that would be beneficial to our city council.
Great. And so next we'll go to Nick Nowitzki. So you're talking about Justice and characteristics about why he would be a good city council member.
Let's see. Being a new father, I think that having a new family perspective, what always is helpful, a new viewpoints and current viewpoints, because raising kids changes so frequently that I'm sure, even before when me and Rachel had young ones. And it sounds like you'd bring a medical expertise that is currently not on the council, I would say.
Thank you. And so the last one to answer this is John Merson about Nick.
Nick, he volunteers his time to all different Lions Club, Boosters, everything. I mean, that's besides having a family passion with his daughter's softball team and stuff going on the weekends. I mean, Nick gives more time to, like he should, to the family and to the city and to the groups that he works with. So to me, he does a great job volunteering. He's a good guy. And he's always gives us a good laugh once in a while. So, that's all I have.
Okay, good. So we'll go into closing comments now. So 60 seconds to kind of give your final comments about running for city council here in Columbia Heights. And first up is going to be Justice Briggs.
So again, want to thank the Legal Women Voters for holding the forum tonight and allowing all of us to share visions for the city. As I stated before, I'm a husband, new dad, and fourth-year medical student at the University of Minnesota, running to represent you all at Columbia Heights City Hall as your next city council member. I'll bring a fresh, diverse perspective to the city hall that will represent all the people of Columbia Heights. My medical education with strong training in medicine, science, and public health has prepared me well to tackle the challenges that I currently face as a city. I believe that the people of Columbia Heights are deeply rooted in making the city as best it possibly can be, and that is exactly what I tend to do. The profession of medicine is inherently political. We must be vocal to make our presence known in health, for the health, safety, and well-being of our patients and communities. And I often think back to the famous German physician Rudolf Virgau's quote, "That medicine is a social science, and politics is nothing but medicine on a larger scale." So again, my name is Justice Briggs, and I want to be your next council member to be the voice of the people for Columbia Heights.
Thank you. And closing comments, Nick Nowitzki.
Thank you. Let's see. First off, I just want, I'm a husband. I'm a father of two teenagers. I'm a small business owner. And if elected to keep serving for the city, I will bring all those perspectives, plus the multiple volunteer groups that I'm with, the Lions, Boosters, Kiwanis. They all give me firsthand experiences, opinions, and viewpoints that I wouldn't have had otherwise. And I will do everything I can to keep making partnerships with the school district and the county and keep our city a safe, welcoming place, like our biggest celebration, the Jamboree that I coordinate. And over the last few years, we've had no incidences. And it's one of the best events of the year, and it's attended by families and of every, everywhere. So, thank you.
Great. And next up, John Merson, closing comments.
I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight. And my love, passion for the city of Columbia Heights. I grew up here. I love this city. I'd do anything for this city. So I'm just, I'd just like to say with having my kids here and stuff growing up, that I just can't say enough about how much I love being on the city council, giving back. And there's a lot of stuff that we're working on this year that I'd like to still be around for next year, for another four years, to help get everything settled in. Because this will be my third term if I get elected. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who's supported me over the years and are supporting me now. So thank you very much.
Okay. And so closing comments, Rachel James.
Thank you to the Legal Women Voters. Also, thank you to the other candidates. I know, Nick and John, you've worked hard on the council. And Justice, this is a lot of work running for council. So thank you all for serving our community. We're so happy. And thank you to the many people throughout the years who have asked me to run and who have supported me and have donated and have volunteered. I'm really here tonight and texted me, encouraged me. I will work for you in Columbia Heights. You can count on me to stand up for your First Amendment rights to protest. You can count on me to support referendums and funding that our schools need. You can count on me to be responsive to the various needs of our community. You can count on me to keep asking the tough questions of our police department when it's needed. Voters, thank you for watching this. Man, it's a long night. You're here all night. Check me out on rachelforheights.com or Facebook or Instagram. Email me, call me. I'd love to get to know you and hear your issues.
Again, just to wrap up, there are seven candidates running for the city council positions. With the August 9 primary election, the number will go from seven to four. And those four candidates will be on the general election ballot in November, with two people being elected for this at-large city council four-year term. I want to thank the candidates this evening, Justice Briggs, Nick Nowitzki, John Merson, Rachel James. Thank you. Thanks to the viewers for your 101 questions submitted. And I wanted to mention, if your specific one was not asked, please reach out to these candidates. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to answer your question. We're glad to see informed voters. If you'd like more information about Legal Women Voters, it's legawomenvoters@anokablanconrapidsminnesota.org. So I'll spell that quickly. L W V A B C M N dot O R G. So you can check the city website or YouTube where you saw this program. And then if you need to register to vote, you can do that online. The best place to check is through the Secretary of State's office, and they have a great website, and it's MNvotes.org. M N V O T E S dot O R G. And that'll give you all the information, including a sample ballot. And with that, I want to encourage everybody to vote in the primary election on August 9. And with that, thank you and good evening.
Thank you.